2022, last day of February. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Ottawa City Commission Study Session. We'll start with public comments. Do we have any public comments?
None registered.
All right, thank you. Moves us on to items to be placed on the regular city commission agenda. That's the minutes from February fourteenth study session, February sixteenth regular meeting and February twenty first study session, along with a proclamation recognizing March 2022 as healthcare professionals appreciation month. Commissioners, were you able to go through all that? Everything look good to move on to the agenda? All right, thank you. Close the song to items for presentation and discussion. That'll be item one, which is a homeless donation challenge. Paul Bean, you got a bit of talk about that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Afternoon, Commissioners. I was approached a couple of months ago, well, before I start, I just want to make a point of saying thanks. Richard and Miss Landis and Dennis Tharp and probably some others have been working tirelessly on this base grant that's due today. And that could be something where they've spent hours on it, done a tremendous amount of work and they put together a phenomenal grant. You may or may not get it. Nobody would know what went into that. So I just wanted the public to know about work that they've put into that. It was a four-week turnaround, but I just commend the city and all the work that was done by so many to get that in in time. And I'm optimistic that that might be a grant they look to seriously fund. But just wanted to flip that up. Sorry, I was off the agenda.
Hey, we appreciate that information.
I was approached about a month ago by ECAN, Hope House and United Way to see if there's something I could do to help them raise money for the homeless temporary housing needs in the community for the homeless. And for some reason, they thought I knew something about fundraising. So they finagled me. But happy to help them. It's something I feel passionate about. But obviously, we have some issues here in our community. But what we did was I said I would reach out to the community at large, but specifically to FCDC members and ask them to contribute to Hope House, would be the agency to funnel this through, to provide some resources. So when we have needs for temporary housing, they've got an agreement for the hotels in town that does it for a discounted rate and provides these folks that are in need of some shelter, especially when it's cold. But there's other circumstances that we all know that come up where somebody may need a place to stay for a night. So I put out the clarion call for some assistance. They had some grant money last year and that grant wasn't available. So that's one of the reasons why we're working on that this year. But Advent Health stepped up right away with a lead gift, kind of a challenge gift of $2,000. And Dallas Perkley was very supportive of that effort and got behind it right away. But since then, thanks to Calmar, Advent Health, Franklin County, Kansas Gas, Edward Jones, Ryan Henningson, Bill Sut Sui at Ottawa University and the Walmart Distribution Center here is number sixty three five. We've raised over $7,200 last week, basically, for this purpose. And so I thought I would come to the city and just ask for your consideration of supporting that and consider a contribution to Hope House to help those that are in need from time to time for temporary housing. I think they have a great partnership between ECAN and Hope House and United Way work very well together in identifying and communicating with each other when they do identify somebody in need and work together very well. So that sometimes when those agencies don't work together, a person could go around and kind of hit each one and they don't know it. But this is a very well organized and orchestrated approach to this problem. So any support the city would consider on a personal level as a taxpaying citizen, I would certainly appreciate that. But I know our friends in Hope House and ECAN and United Way could certainly use the help. So that is my comment for consideration today. Happy to answer any questions.
Paul, thank you so much for bringing this to us today. I wonder if you could address what is the fundraising goal for this particular initiative?
Didn't set a goal. Last year, they spent over $25,000 on this effort. And I suspect there'll be some other ways that they can garner some funds. But basically, I guess, when I say there's not a goal, I haven't until now publicly said I have a personal goal, but I'd like to get to ten if we can. And I think we will. We've got a couple more businesses that are looking at doing something. So I think ten's within reach and anything over that would be.
So what is the funding gap that was left from the grant that they were able to utilize last year?
They spent all of that last year.
So it was a $25,000 grant last year?
Yeah, well, I think it was twenty-five last year. It might have been twenty-two. I can't remember for sure. But it was over 20,000 and they spent all of it.
And so if someone is watching this presentation and they want to give, you did, just for clarification, you did indicate that that would be Hope House that would be.
That's correct.
Kind of the agency that is.
Yeah, we agreed we'd funnel it through Hope House, but those other agencies are obviously involved.
And who is the decision maker on when a person receives assistance?
It'd be those three agencies working together, identifying people in need and determine who needs housing and for how long. That's kind of their expertise. So I don't, I'm not involved in that. That's not my expertise.
Oh, I got a few questions and I'm not sure if you can answer them. First of all, you mentioned, I think you've raised $7,200 total so far. Now, I'm assuming there's already been some funds that have been spent?
Yeah, I don't know what the spending's been so far this year because, again, I'm not that involved in it. But it's a year-round need. I kind of got excited about it because I knew February was coming and I had memories of last February. And of course, this has been a cold month. Hopefully, it's behind us. But there still will be needs for temporary housing through a number of, could be economic issues, could be risked by being at home, those types of things. So, yeah, but I don't know what the expenditures have been this year.
I just don't want the public to think that, you know, this is just now being talked about.
Right.
I mean, they've certainly been taking care of, you know, putting homeless folks in rooms already. As far as I understand, I think 110 nights already have been, they've actually put somebody in a room at this point. It's been over, I believe, ten grand.
Yeah.
So there's been a significant amount of money already spent. They're just, they're just running out of funds, unfortunately.
Right, right.
Commissioners, any questions for Paul?
What other agencies are you approaching?
I've approached every FCDC member, been on the radio probably four or five times talking about it. And KOFO's done a great job of promoting that. Been, like I said, I've probably approached FCDC three or four times as a group. So it's been pretty public between that and KOFO.
And so will you be approaching the county for a donation?
County has made a donation of $2,000.
And other cities?
They've been approached.
Commissioners, how would you like to proceed?
I.
I'd like to think about it honestly. I don't like to make movement and I don't like to make movement. It is a beautiful day. We are going to end February on not a cold spell.
That's right.
I can guarantee you, we're not going to have a cold spell in February. Can guarantee it. But as Paul had indicated, the need will not go away just because the temperature gets warmer. So I think that we probably need to have a conversation with public finance and see what that looks like and bring that back and have a conversation among us.
Well, I agree. I think we typically kind of don't make rash decisions. Certainly, we could put it off another week, maybe discuss it next Monday and see what information we get in the meantime, where we can make some informed decisions. Paul, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, that'll move us on to review of our January 2022 monthly reports. Commissioner Graves, would you like to go first?
Yeah, I really didn't have very many questions. I did have a comment, something that I just wanted to add to on Ottawa Main Streets report on packet page seventy-six. I'm not sure if it's the same as the electronic page. But I am on that board and had attended the meeting and did want to add that they did get the job description out for their executive director. And so hopefully, that'll be something that'll be put into place here pretty soon and we can get even more things on the list for projects. So that was all I wanted to add.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kayler?
Yes. I have just a few questions. And actually, some of my questions are just information for the public. As many of you know around the table, that's generally how I do it. But the first question is for Paul Summers on page thirty-five. And Paul, you indicate that there are over 1,300 city alert members. And although individuals in this room may know what a city alert is, an individual may not know in the community what a city alert is. And it is, I'm getting ready to be storm season. What is a city alert and how can a citizen be a part of that?
The city alert system is set up for citizens to receive text messages or old-fashioned phone calls with a recorded message for anything that will require them to do something, some kind of emergency. Usually, we've used it before when we close and open the levy gates, those kinds of items. But it's free to sign up. It's on the website. But, yeah, it just takes a phone number to sign up.
So if an individual is looking to sign up for a city alert, you say it's on the website and they could put it in the information area in the search bar, city alert, and it'll take them there or something similar?
Yeah, and then they just supply their phone number. There's a little portal. They just put in their phone number and then they're in.
Right. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that.
No problem. Thank you.
My next question is for Dennis Tharp on page forty-nine. You indicate, Dennis, on the Parks and Cemetery report that Rosemont has nothing to note. You're not selling lots in Rosemont, right?
We're not.
Right. So the only, so if an individual comes to our community and unfortunately has to put to rest a loved one, that is not an option.
We've got two other cemeteries, Hope and Hyde. And those both have available lives.
Okay. Good. So they're still our option. Now, further on your page, it indicates that the city became an owner of a tug for the airport. Tell me about becoming a owner. Was that given to us? Was that something that you purchased?
It was not. These days, things get given away. But we weren't able to and we had put money in our budget to purchase a tug, which for folks that don't know, is what we pull the airplanes around. The group that was at the airport before had left a tug there and we were, I'm going to say we were leasing it. And through a couple of processes, but we figured it was really time that with the new FBO coming on, that we owned the tug and that we had control of all the maintenance and those kinds of things for that tug. The tug is in very good shape. The tug cost us about $7,000, which, as we looked around, that was a pretty good deal. And because we had budgeted really about double that for the tug, we were able to purchase a couple of extensions, you know, which allows the tug to be back away from the airplanes when they're pulling them around and be a lot safer.
Thank you for clarifying that. I, the next question, and actually, it's just probably just a comment on page fifty-nine. And I hope that citizens take a chance to actually look at this because I do think it's interesting when we're looking at the consumption of electricity in our community. It looks like about 40% of our consumption of electricity comes from residential houses and 60% comes from everything else. Is that correct?
Yes.
So it also gives some great data about what is the average household usage. And then further on down, it does indicate that right now we have about two, 2.2 houses. I'm not sure how we get 2.2 houses, but I'm sure somebody can get that to us. Two, a little over two houses that are powered by solar energy. But we have about 3,600 houses, or sorry, pardon me, 4,300 houses that are powered by wind. So certainly something to think about when we are looking at energy consumption and how that, how that works. Anything you want to say about that, Dennis?
Just that our renewable portfolio is substantial at this point in time. Something that's been worked on quite a while. Our wind, of course, is our biggest contributor to our renewables. But on average, we are about 36% as a community.
Thank you. My next question is for Paul and it's on page seventy-two. Paul, my question is regarding your budget versus actual of your 2021 budget. In 3002 city contribution, that city contribution line is simply the city of Ottawa's contribution, not every city. Right. I know I asked that last month, but just want to clarify again there and possibly you're working on kind of making sure that we denote what other cities in Franklin County are utilizing or seeing the value in that.
Right. In the summary, it breaks out exactly what city is given. From an accounting perspective, since it's only made one time, it's not really helpful to make a separate accounting line for each city because those cities don't be on the contribution by city. So put it into the summary. If that's the number that they give, it won't change. That's what I'm just trying to do.
Is it possible to have maybe another line that just says, or maybe can we change it to say city of Ottawa contribution?
Sure.
Or other city contributions, something that denotes?
Sure.
Thank you. And my last question is for Terry regarding your rescheduling of the Sun Does Shine. And I wonder if you might want to, Terry, tell us about, I know it's warm and lovely today, but that does not mean that the event that you had planned, that didn't go so well there. And so can you tell us about the rescheduling of the Sun Does Shine?
Yeah, our plan is to reschedule it. We are still working with the author to get that rescheduled. There's a lot of moving parts and a lot of people to get on the same schedule. We've gotten everybody else to agree to a date. We've just got to hear back from the author on that date. So as soon as we hear back, we will put the announcement out there.
Perfect. All right. It's all my questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Kayler. Mayor Proketskyn Skidmore?
Yeah, I guess I'm pulling up page twelve, just looking at all the financial numbers. I know that, maybe Melanie, maybe it's your question for you. On our land bank, we've got the 385,000 in that account. Do we plan to close that account out now that we're done with our properties? Or is it up to us to decide if we're going to have those monies?
I think there's probably still a decision to be made by that board to make sure that we know exactly how those monies are going to be distributed. So some of it will need to go back to debt service to make the payments. But then I believe there's probably another amount that needs to be determined what we're going to do with that. And I don't have to break down here with me, but I can provide that and then we could get something scheduled.
So I might add, Commissioner, that we will need to have a land bank meeting and then we could go through that and talk about what choices you have with those funds. One of which could be that you, if there are some funds left, that there's something you can do to put that towards additional needed housing.
Good. All right. So we've already closed on the deal and we've got the money, the dust settled and ordered. Okay, so, all right. Thank you. I guess on that same page, on the Proximity Park. I guess the line item zero ninety-seven, that's the 3.1 million. So that's all its sales taxes being the cumulative number we've got there. Now, is that net of debt service or do you know on that? I know I'm pretty put on the spot here.
It's not net of debt service. So it's just the current unencumbered cash balance.
Okay, good.
The unencumbered. But, yeah, it's just for the current, the current cash balance.
All right, good. And I refresh my memory. I know the county get part of that money or the sales tax is just Ottawa proper, right? I think that's only the half cent. Okay.
And to go a step further on refreshing, remembering, when that election was held, it was also for the continuation of a half cent, which goes into the general fund. And then it was for the addition of this half cent, which went towards proximity park expenses and debt.
Good. Good. Let's see, let's go on to page fourteen with our idle funds. And I noticed, I don't know if you can tell, some of the current rates, we had a couple of CDs that have matured here in February. And you know roughly what we're going rate is on some of these repriced CDs?
We have not reinvested. The last of the February just matured, yes, this week. And so we've closed those out and then our goal is to go back out and rebid that to our local banks and get some of this reinvested because we haven't reinvested through most of January and the February ones. So we do need to do that, but the rates have been so low that it wasn't a good time to reinvest for any lengthy period of time.
That's a good move. I agree with you on that. I might add that we have, it looks like five CDs maturing in February. If we go out year by year, we'll have that many again each year unless you plan to try to ladder that out a little bit in the future and that way we may have not so many coming due in February. Suddenly having to whip in a lot of, you know, risk, I think, in just a month of February that rates will be higher. I think another month or two, we'll see some increases on that. So I think it's a good time, a good idea to hold off and wait a bit. Is that a promise? Well, that's my vote. I'm going to get one vote, so, yeah. Let me look here. Now, page thirty-two, and this is on the fire department. And Tim's here. There's a question here that, community risk reduction meetings. And maybe it's my fault. I haven't noticed that in the past, but that looks like a good idea. That's something recent. Then tell me a little bit about that.
Yeah, so community, community risk reduction is a new area we're going into that takes in fire education, fire prevention, all under one name.
Can you come up here? I was told that they can't hear us unless we're standing up here. Thank you.
I figured out what's coming. So, no, it's called CRR, Community Risk Reduction. And so it encompasses a couple of different areas that, fire prevention, fire, education, inspection codes. So it all lumps it into one, one area. And Lieutenant Mike Wilson is our CRR. I wouldn't say agent, but officer. He's reached out to Main Street and Chamber and really trying to get involved in the community. So it's all, everything we do, but we've just kind of restructured it in a new approach. And that's not just in Ottawa, that's across the country.
So tell me, where do you go for this and how's the attendance been?
So he's been going to, to the different agencies and I think he's had good success with meetings. And then we're just in that infancy stage on getting it kind of reworked into the CRR program. So we're taking all these different areas and bringing them under one umbrella. We're still doing the same thing that we have been. One of the things, it's more of a nationwide move to see this community risk reduction. And so he's networking a lot with other departments across the country. It's, I think we'll see some benefit. It will be, it'll take some time, but I think definitely we'll see some benefit.
I just want to reiterate this, that for our safety, in a panic, you don't know where to go if you're in a building you're not familiar with. And that's what my dad ingrained in me before I sit down in a building I've never been in before, to plan your exit strategy before you even sit down because if things get hectic very quickly, they can. In a panic, you think the only door you can go out is the one which you came in. And there are exits near the stage on places that people don't realize. So plan your exit strategy before you sit down and I think you'd be a lot safer.
My kids would attest to that. Every time we go stay somewhere, I count the doors to the stairways. You go right or left.
How many rows are you counting on? Hold on.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it takes over your life in a sense, but.
Yeah, but that's important. Yeah. And I think it's better to be prepared for rather than trying to make a decision that.
They have many studies that show that people have died because they tried to go out the same exit that they came in. There was next, right next door, right next to me.
I've heard that too. Sorry. Thank you, Chief.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
For him or together? All together?
We're all together.
All right. Thank you. I just got a few things, kind of a vague question, Melanie, maybe you can answer it. We have some really nice graphs right here on page seventeen and a lot of good red arcs, significant increases in all the taxes. Can you relate that to anything in particular?
I am missing my page seventeen. I'm so sorry.
It's just a generic question. I mean, everything.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
No, I actually, so I know that we were up at the end of 2021, over a 5% increase in all of our sales tax areas. And I did just calculate January and it's up significantly from last January. And I would say that's great, but also I always look at that with caution because just because January's up does not mean that February, March and April are going to be that same percentage increase. So usually, it's really early in the year to be able to tell what we're going to land.
Sure. And I didn't anticipate any other ones being significantly higher. Like, you know, January has been, it's just nineteen, twenty and twenty-one. We're all kind of red in the same area and twenty-two spiked up for some reason. So I didn't know.
And I don't have anything to attribute that to other than remember that our, the distributions that we receive are for two months ago and the sales were recognized. So January distributions would have been from November sales. So November brought more sales than in those past years.
Thank you. Terry? Community, sorry, community development, somebody from there? Richard, do you know why we don't have a nuisance operator or code officer right now working?
Well, we do, but he's part-time. He's part-time, but he's here for a couple of, he is here sometime through the winter, but I think he starts in earnest April first.
Okay. It just said code officer is now working zero days. So I just didn't know it.
Thanks for asking me a question. I didn't answer.
Well, somebody did. And then I just got a few.
What page is that on, Mayor?
I'm sorry. Twenty-five. And then I'm just going to give a few folks a little things to say. Paul, do you want to come up and tell us anything that's going on with FCDC?
Sure. I'm right. Zero days.
I just want to.
You said Richard's right. Yes, yes.
Sure, of course.
Yeah, Richard's right.
I will double check just to make sure I know.
Does that mean Paul has to come back and say you're right again or?
I'm just focusing.
Working on a number of things. We're having a great response to the Franklin County Career Day on March 22nd. It'll be at Ottawa High School, but we have all of the juniors and seniors from all the schools in the county are coming. We'll have over 600 participants and have, gosh, I think around 60 tables now from people coming to sit in the chamber and talk to students about their career opportunities and just how they got into the career in some cases. So just tremendous outpouring for that. We've also been getting sponsorships for that and have had a great response. I think close to $5,000 in donations for sponsorships. So really am excited by how the community is getting behind the Franklin County Career Day and really appreciate that involvement in the school districts. There is a child awareness conference, childcare awareness conference in Paola this Friday. I've been working on that and we've got several folks here from the community. I think Commissioner Kayler's going. Other folks will have a pretty good contingency from Ottawa and Franklin County. That'll be an opportunity for a regional approach to kind of sit down and share ideas what we're doing to deal with childcare needs and issues from. from the economic standpoint of the workforce and come away with some solutions and some new ideas, I think, that we can bring home and also kind of share what we're, we're working on, maybe get some synergies from a regional standpoint. As far as proximity park, it's pretty quiet. We, we had a, uh, pretty aggressive lead on some property on the north side of town. Again, uh, Richard and Dennis and the city folks, uh, truly were great partners. We had to engage pretty extensively on that. And then, uh, Thursday, uh, after a lot of work, uh, we heard that they decided not to move at this time. So that's kind of how it goes, but, um, they kind of, that was a project I started working on a year ago. It kind of went dormant and then about ten days, they were ready to roll and then they just said, never mind. But, uh, again, great partnerships with the city and the county and all the people involved. We, we responded very quickly and timely in partnership with Commerce. And, uh, and then F C D C's been very integral in, in spreading the word and, and being as helpful as I can with the space grants that were due today. Uh, I mentioned a great job the city did. Uh, City of Welsville submitted three grants of their own. Uh, I think they had eight individual, uh, developers apply within for projects in, in Welsville. We had a number of individuals. I don't know the four hundred, but we had a number of similar approach from the developers here in Ottawa. Um, so Franklin County was very aggressive, very well informed about the base grant. I suspect what will happen, uh, because there's going to be such a huge response of this program that you'll see the state come back and do another round of it for another hundred million, I guess. But I, 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 I am very optimistic that Franklin County will land one. I'm quite optimistic, actually, that City of Ottawa, because of their good work, might be, uh, our lead candidate for funding Franklin County, but we'll see where that goes. But a lot of great work by a lot of great people and, uh, again, it's something where you may not ever see anything come out of it, but just the amount of hours, the amount of time that went into it, that there's a lot of economic effort that's going on in our community. And I think that's important for our citizens to know. So that's kind of my update. Unless you have any questions.
All right. Great question here. Yeah, I guess I'm kind of curious around the state. Have you heard other people in your position in towns our size? Are they getting businesses to relocate or expand to industrial parks or is it just been real quiet?
It's been pretty quiet. Uh, most of the growth, of course, been along the, uh, the metro area, Kansas City and Wichita. And you're seeing some out in Salina. Uh, it's had some success. But as, as far as the rural communities, you're not seeing a lot of activity there yet. Now, I will say, um, you know, the state's funded this, this big package for a billion dollar investment that they're recruiting. And if that lands up in our part of the state, then that certainly will have ripple effect. They'll give us an opportunity to run some of that synergy. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll hear about that pretty soon. The Lieutenant Governor last week was pretty, uh, excited about where that was heading. So we'll stay tuned and see what we hear. But I'm hoping it's, if we land it, I, all respect to Wichita, I hope it's in Kansas City region.
Getting hearing things about the Sunfire plant and how they got available space there, but I guess we'll wait and see if they, if they announce.
Wait and see what we hear. There's a lot of rumors, but I don't want to spread rumors.
Anything else? Any other questions, Paul? Paul, thank you. Thank you, Chief. I was making sure you were back there. That's why I looked. Okay. Tiffany, I hear you got something, uh, I don't know. Something on Friday night, I guess.
A little something going on. Um, as of right now, we have sold seven hundred and fifty-eight tickets for the Aaron Watson concert on Friday evening. O M A holds eight hundred and thirty, so we are, we're, fingers crossed, we have our first sellout in what I've been told since the eighties. Um, there have been shows that have had a lot of people at them in the past. But I don't have records on all of those shows, but what I've been told, the last time the O M A was officially sold out was when Johnny Cash played there in the eighties. So we are hopeful that we will have one of those Friday night. Not only is this the biggest attendance show wise that we've done since I've been here, um, five years now, but it's also the largest production that we've done as well. And so, uh, we have a lot of volunteers, city staff, um, and our staff that are coming together Friday to make this a really fantastic night for entertainment in Ottawa. And I would just like to also mention that, um, in the past year, five years since I've been here, a lot of those larger shows that we've had have had attendance from people from outside of our community. And this is the most Franklin County tickets I've sold, um, in my fifth year. So that's really exciting to have our local community supporting the show. So real excited about that.
Sure. Here they go.
Uh, I'll just mention that before Friday night, on Thursday night, we have our finale of the songwriter showcase for the season. It's been kind of a roller coaster ride on that event this year, but, uh, three of our finalists are from Franklin County. Really great show. It's, it's seven o'clock on Thursday night. You can come attend in person. It's free. Or join us on the live stream as we crown another winner of that. The person who wins that will get to play the auditorium this year as an opener for one of our larger shows and actually get paid to play because they've all been playing these shows for three, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Cal, you got anything you want to tell us?
Well, I'll just, first of all, I'd, I'd like to thank Commissioner Graves for attending our, her first meeting and actually contributing to the meeting. So it was nice to have the representative of you all there. Uh, we are currently, uh, she's, as she said, we are currently accepting, uh, executive director applications. They'll be, uh, processed through the city and we're going to use the city and the state Main Street program to help us select our, uh, executive director. One of the things I would like to touch on is we do have, uh, I'm actually doing the annual report on our I W W account. It's sitting without walls. For those of you who, uh, know about that, that used to be revenue sharing money. And it's, uh, was, it's, it's state money, but it's, uh, used by the Main Street program to help businesses in the historic downtown district. And that runs from the river to Fifth Street, from, uh, the, uh, alley on the west side of Walnut to the alley on the east side of Hickory. That's what the historic downtown district is. And it can be used by, uh, businesses to, for inventory, for remodeling. The big emphasis on that is job retention or job creation. So, uh, again, like I said, we have about fifty thousand. We try to limit, it's, it's a, uh, it's a no interest loan. We try to not loan businesses more money than they can successfully pay back in three to five years. So our, our, we have done a couple of twenty thousand dollar loans, but most of our loans are seven to ten thousand, some as well as five thousand dollars. And so that money's out there. Uh, we have an application process. There's an application form on the website. We'd encourage downtown businesses that want to expand or want to improve their business, even if it's an, even an online part of their business, if it creates jobs or as importantly, if it retains jobs. Uh, we'd love to talk to them about, uh, using some of that fund. So, um, I think that's pretty much it. Unless you guys have any questions for me.
Cal, thank you. Appreciate it. I don't have any more questions. Does anybody else have anything that they want to talk about? All right. That'll move us on to our next item, uh, continued discussion of the street improvement rehabilitation plan for twenty twenty-two. Dennis, do you have any updates or anything else you'd like to tell us about that?
I really do not. I would stand for, for any questions. Uh, like I said before, this is, we believe this is a good plan for this year. This is, uh, uh, what we have, uh, recognized as, as streets that, that we need to hit this year, along with some other work that, that we plan to do. So we'll certainly try to answer any questions. If not, we would certainly like to get this out to bid. It's that time of year.
Commissioners, any questions for Dennis?
One time you mentioned something about the Ninth Street on Cedar to Fifteenth, or was that some other topic? I don't know.
Yeah, it is a different topic. Uh, and I will be back to you. Uh, it is not Ninth, but it's Thirteen to Fifteen. And we, uh, and that is a stormwater project. I think it's important to keep that in mind, that that is a stormwater project. And, and we've got two or three of those, you know, on the books, but we're gonna, we're gonna continue to try to knock them out.
Dennis, you may have discussed this last week, but, um, when, uh, last year, when we went up to bid for street rehab projects, the cost to rehab a street may be a bit different than it is this year. And, um, you're, um, I'm assuming, I want, I don't want to assume, but, um, you've taken into account, um, the rise in costs?
These, these estimates have taken that into account. Uh, whether that's dead on or not, we're about to find out. But, uh, but yes, it has taken, taken in the, the rising costs of, of everything. It's not just street, uh, materials, but everything. And, uh, we've also tried to take into account, uh, the fact that, uh, um, even just getting some of the things is, is, is interesting at the points in time. What we're seeing is, is the kind of materials we're talking here are pretty readily available locally. So, uh, it, it doesn't appear we'll have a problem. Um, our, our next one and the reason I said we'd really like to get this out to bid is, you know, it's that time of year. Everybody's getting busy. Everybody's making their plans for the year and we need to be in the midst of that.
Commissioners, any other questions for Dennis on this? Would you be okay replacing this on Wednesday's agenda? All right. Thank you, Dennis. I'm going to just all do the continued discussion for the fire engine replacement with Chief Mathias.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, coming for you again today with, uh, hopefully narrowing this down. Last couple of weeks, my staff and this landis and I have, uh, done quite a bit of work on this, this topic. And, um, one of the vendors that we talked about, the delivery date of twenty months, had came back to us and they, they do have a program. It's called B M P, Built by Pierce, and that is solely set aside for trucks or cities that have had trucks and accidents and totaled and stuff. And so they have a quick build on them, which, uh, all the, the pre-engineering is all done ahead of time. So, um, there's no really thrill, thrills on trucks, on these type of trucks. We do get a, have a little bit of say in some custom work, but the majority, why the, why the, uh, delivery time is almost cut half. They've, they've said that they could get us to a new truck in ten months from a start build to ten months. Is because all of the, the pre-engineering has been done. If we would go with a twenty-month project, we would go up to, if we went with Pierce, we'd go to Wisconsin for a pre-build engineering session for three days. We'd go back in six months halfway, make sure everything's looking the way it is. And then at the final, uh, final inspection, we go back for three more days. So we cut that, that pre-inspection out. We do a little bit of custom work for us, but it, but that's where they get the savings. I had, I had that question. I didn't know. You know, you've told us that we had twenty months delivery and now we're ten, you know, I didn't want a truck that was in the corner of the plant for ten years. And so they, they assure us that's not the case and they build them all the time with this Build My Pierce program. So, uh, we, we got another bid from another vendor and believe it or not, they came within about, uh, as much money as we're talking, six hundred, seven hundred and sixty thousand-ish dollars. They came in within about two thousand dollars of each other. So I think we're getting, and the Pierce was the, the cheaper of the two, by two thousand and seven dollars, a less expensive. I've, I've learned that. But, so what we're here today is to hopefully move forward, uh, with an approval to, for us to move forward with the purchase of the, of the Pierce fire truck. This landis could talk about the financing, but the bid we currently have for the Pierce is seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and six cents with the guaranteed build out of, uh, right at ten, ten and a half months. Will be on a, what we're looking at now, a ten-year lease. And this landis can talk about the financing quite a bit more than that, but you're not.
Sure. So we've talked about this before, that we would have the option to do a lease purchase through our. Sorry. That was my confusion. I'm sorry. Um, so we talked about that we would, uh, be able to do this through a lease purchase with our city, um, lease purchase program or the way that we would, uh, process, I guess. Um, and then also we have been provided two different options through the company. One being, um, a five, seven and ten-year option if we were to turn back the, the, um, truck at the end of the term, but also a five, seven and ten-year, um, lease purchase option if we wanted to do that through them. So we haven't determined yet exactly which way we would move. Um, I don't believe that any one of those options has to be decided today or maybe when we, when we order the truck, but we probably will want to give them some indication of whether we intend to go through them at all and then for through ourselves. But, um, but so I guess more to come on that. We're looking at all the options to see if there's any that are most affordable, of course, at any one time. We wouldn't know what our lease purchase rate might be until we would bid that. That would be at the time that we actually receive the truck. So down the road, um, or they have a set, um, interest rate that they offer depending on the timeframe for repayment that we would select with them if we were to go that route. Do you have questions about that at all?
It's one of the financing. Are we gonna put out to other lenders to see what kind of rate we can get?
If we're gonna choose our, if we go our process, we would do that. We would bid it out to all local banks, um, see what the best rate is, the best conditions, um, that we can get back. If we go with them, because that is another option that's out there, then obviously we're, we use their lender and their, their terms.
With the last truck we purchased a few years ago, had the same option of either with that company or local banks and, and the local banks. We want local banks.
With the better rate?
Yeah.
All the options, like, it's good. It's bank qualified, I assume, so they're bank, okay.
We will go through the H G A C, which is the, the procurement company still, that process. It's all been procured, so we're good that way. Uh, the lease turn-in is an option. We've talked at quite, quite some length on this. I don't think currently a lease turn-in would be a good program for us right now. But in the future, I think where we don't have any, we don't have any, uh, value or not much value to a thirty-year-old fire truck where we could possibly, uh, recoup or lessen our, our future purchases if we do turn them around in ten or twelve years. They do have some value, uh, then we can go right back in and lease another one. So I think the way we've done it years past has worked. There's just no value or very little value for the trucks that are twenty, thirty years old out there. So it's, that's, that's a fine line and that's another topic for another day, but that, that option is out there.
The truck that we're replacing is what, twenty-five, twenty-six years old?
Nineteen ninety-six.
And I, I guess to just further comment on what he's saying. So we have our, our last couple of purchases are fairly close together, which means that they'll be reaching those ages to age out and be replaced at, at somewhat similar times. So if we can maybe be more strategic about at some future point when we have to replace, which one might be an, an option to turn back in if there's something that's relatively newer that might be able to make it yet the extra ten years, um, as a reserve, then that would definitely make some sense to do that. But with this one, it would put us in a little bit difficult position whereas some of our other vehicles are, are, we won't be in a, in a prime position to be able to turn that back and not be in a difficult position with some of the older units then.
Yeah. And we're, we've come up with a, a apparatus replacement program that will, you know, bring forward at some point. It just kind of is a roadmap for years to come and try our best to stay on that roadmap. So.
Well, we're most likely looking at the pre-payment discount, correct?
Their prepayment discount, um, says that you're going to pay all of that upfront.
Which we would if we procured that first funds from somebody else, correct?
And so we could do that, but the downside of that is that if we, we would be making an interest payment and a principal payment. And so we could do that, but the downside of that is that if we, we would be making an interest payment and a principal payment before you even have the truck in hand because of the lag. So otherwise, we could go ahead and do that at the end. So really, we probably need to sit down and do that, that calculation as to are you saving anything either by interest or by discount?
I mean, it's a significant savings, but I mean, I'm sure it's a significant cost too if you're paying day one.
Yeah. Now, you know, it makes more sense on a 10-month turnaround bill than a 20. If it was, if that was at 20, I would not.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was looking at also is since the time's cut in half, maybe there is some savings.
Yeah, there might be.
And so moving forward, if you, if you approve this on Wednesday's meeting is what we're asking. There will be a resolution to come forward. They require a resolution by the city, signed by the city.
And I'm assuming we're just, if it moved to Wednesday, you're just asking us to approve moving forward of the purchase, not necessarily the, the Ps and Qs of it.
Right. Exactly. You may not have that, you may not have that resolution, but what we're asking is on Wednesday that you say, okay, we're ready to go. Go get the paperwork together. Go do the exploration on the financing. Let's, and part of that may be ordering that truck also. But even though it says that we have till April 1st to do it, April 1st happens pretty quickly.
So Chief, I appreciate the fact that you kind of asked more questions and, and there was an opportunity to greatly reduce the number, or the number of months that the estimated build was. As it was quoted to you, it's 17 months. However, with the 17 months to 10 months, that, like you, I want to make sure I understand it. You have changed what you're allowed to, to ask for in the fire truck. And so we're, we are taking, we're taking kind of that pre-build, like you said, it's kind of that manufactured home kind of stance on it. And so will you be presented or have the opportunity to look at the plans to make sure that there isn't anything that is glaring to you that you think, heck, we just can't not do something with this? Or is there an opportunity for you to make sure that this, which I love the idea that it's, that it's, could be ready to go in 10 months? But I don't love the idea of it being ready in 10 months and then we get it and it's a fire truck that we can't use and doesn't serve the needs of our citizens.
That's a great question. No, we have full right all the way through from, from the point we say yes, we're going to go move ahead to the day we pick it up. We have the ability to change anything we want. Now, there does come some cost to that if there's a major change. But all it's doing is, so some, some cities want a thicker frame, whatever that is. We're going with the standard. You know, so it's some of those engineering things that we really, I mean, I am not an engineer. I'm trusting with the plant. It's just the things that we can change, we have the ability to change. It's the engineering on the motor. You know, do we want this or that brand or have it set here, have it set there? It will mimic almost, I think by the time we get it, you won't know the difference between what the newest truck we have and this, this one coming in. It's going to be a mirror image. We like the truck we have, it's worked out great. And so we've made a few interior tweaks, but on the exterior, it's, it's, I, I really done my due diligence on that we have, you know. It'll be a truck for Ottawa that will be, that will work for us, so.
Commissioners, any other questions?
I remember at last time we went to see financing, we had a good list of lenders willing to finance this for, we had a good rate, so we're looking forward to seeing what we're doing this time.
Yeah, I think there'll be some.
Commissioner, you okay with moving us on to Wednesday's agenda also?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You want to stay there?
Okay.
As long as you're talking to me, I'm like, no, I'm out.
You want to talk about our phone?
I do, we're talking about our phone.
Next audience, continued discussion of American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funds with Melanie and Richard.
All right.
So Commissioners, Richard, I instead of City Manager, I want to just real quickly review where we've been, where we're at and what we're asking from you today. As you know, we have received, we will receive, what, $1.8, $1.8 billion worth of American Rescue Plan Act. And we had, from our first notification, Melanie and her staff had earnestly looked at the regulations as to what you can do. And those were what they call final interim regulations, right? And then we made a decision that we would wait until the final regulations came out. And yes, there were changes, which were really to our benefit. What, what we presented you with is not an all-inclusive list. There are some things on there, quite frankly, that will change. But what we tried to do is present to you high-value projects that are ready to go. That at least get us started down the road of having a plan to spend the ARPA money. Much like a project in a sewer treatment plant, a couple of projects there with, that will help us get some equipment replaced. And that might be something that might mitigate any future rate increase. So what we'd like to do today is go over this list, ask any questions. And I would ask you to remember, this is not the last time you're going to see the list. It's a living list that you're going to be dealing with. And if you, if you at least conceptually are at a place with this, where you're ready to talk about a couple of specific projects we'd like to recommend to you to get started off. We will bring, and when I say we, I mean, Dennis and Melanie and myself will bring you a couple of projects next week. That we think are kind of, not easy, but they're ready to get out the door, get the bid. And you have to understand, there's a whole bidding process that is outlined by the Treasury Department that we have to follow. So even though we may have it designed and we may have gotten price quotes, we can't really use that. We have to follow what the Treasury Department is telling us to follow. So with that.
Thank you. So I did, I used the same PowerPoint as last time. And I think that he's done a really good job of the overview for the public. Maybe just a short recap, if you wouldn't mind, next slide please. That we did, overall, there was $5 billion that came to the state of Kansas. This is a breakdown of all the different areas that received some of those dollars. $2.3 billion of those going to state agencies that can help with those areas of education, childcare, health, housing, transportation and business grants. Next slide, please. We did receive the $1.87 million. We've received actually in hand, half of that now, the second half we're expecting to come in July of this year. Next slide, please. The purpose is four-fold. It is to respond to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19 or its negative economic impacts. To provide premium pay for employees that were doing essential work or for grants to eligible employers for the same purpose. To provide government services to the extent of production and revenue due to COVID-19 relative to the revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year. So that's what we've called in here, revenue replacement or recovery. And there are some parameters, less parameters now under the final rule for that. And then also to make necessary investments in water sewer, which includes stormwater or broadband infrastructure. And a note here would be that it is, it was not intended to be used for the electric utility. Next slide, please. Under those examples of being able to assist with programming for public use, some of the examples of potential programs would be homeless population, affordable housing, low-income and socially vulnerable populations. Mental health, recreation, economic development and local business economic recovery. These programs would be something where we would set up an application process, review, allocation. They would have to meet the same essential critical criteria that we do under the federal grant guidelines as well as reporting. And we would do that through them becoming a subrecipient of our allocation. Next slide, please. This was a slide that we, we did review last time. These were our top priority items that we had presented to you. One key point here is that this is a one-time revenue source. And under our, the way that we like to move with one-time revenue is that you would apply it to one-time expenditures. The reason being future upkeep or maintenance items, those things are never guaranteed or especially with programs. If you were to start a brand-new program, being able to maintain that program long-term would be difficult without additional funding. And there is no additional funding outside of this, this available amount. So the way we've structured this slide is that we had our top suggested priorities here with the largest community impact. With the point being that we tried to hit every or a lot of populations within our community as well as our infrastructure for our utilities. So trying to run a full gamut of use of these dollars, making sure that our entire community was seeing some benefits. The way that we also structured this was that what we've suggested here as priority projects, it still leaves money available for us to determine what else might be eligible to be used. Or if there, another priority presents itself to us. Two of the options being that we can recover the funds spent on the FF-CRA, which was the, where as an employer, we were, we paid employees for being out on extended leave for, when they had to be under quarantine in the initial onset of the pandemic. And then also putting some money back into COVID-19 testing supplies to ensure that we can keep our frontline personnel out and, and doing their jobs safely and for the public's interaction with them. And then about $400,000 that we can still allocate. The next two slides are really the, the couple of other areas that we have, that we could use these dollars for, that we had come up with. And I wanted to make sure that we talk about, next slide, please. That when, when we put these on here, these are projected numbers, of course, unless there was a specific quote. And some of them, we do have specific quotes on, they are just estimates. Also, everything that we have that we're presenting to you, I understand that is, there are lots of other agencies really looking around the communities across the state and even locally, trying to figure out what everybody else is going to use their money for. This is for the public, this is a preliminary conversation. Nothing has been decided, everything is an estimate at this point. And that I want to make sure that the public and other agencies know that these are just given to you as a point of conversation at this point. These other allowable projects are items that we know were on our radar and do qualify underneath of the criteria for the ARPA funds. Again, some water lines, some stormwater sewer projects in there, as well as some additional parks projects. The other options of, again, city revenue recovery, grant notches, as long as it's not for a federal grant, and then premium pay. One additional slide, next slide, please, is this is just another expanded list of the subrecipient grant opportunities and where we would set up a program to allow other agencies to apply to use our federal allocation. For any of these options, mental health, homeless, portable housing, low-income business grants, recreation and economic development. And with that, I think we would be available for questions. Also, your department heads are available to answer questions and we're looking for your feedback.
One, like if somebody's projects are on our CIP anyway, I mean, those things on our CIP have been well-studied and thought through for a long time. Some of those on there and I certainly work toward and I think we ought to fund those. I'm thinking within the next, the ones that are set for '22, maybe even '23. I don't know if all the '21s are funded or not, but for some of '22, I know. And then the only other question I would have, and I mean, I need some convincing, but on the purchase of street sweeper and the need for a second one. I just need to hear from people, what's the advantage of having a second one or what would that benefit is?
Commissioner, I think I can address that at least somewhat. It would not be a second street sweeper. The model of street sweeper that was purchased, it's been four or five years ago now, has been, been flawed, to say the least. You all know the stories of the fires and the, some of the design flaws that are in that street sweeper. And while we believe, at least to some degree, those have been corrected. We still had two fires in that street sweeper. We've, it's going to take a lot of, it's taken a lot of rehab to get it back on the road. And we believe at this point in time, this is an opportunity for us to, to do a street sweeper with a newer design. Where they have fixed all of these problems, as we understand it, and the people that we talked to that have a new design. So it would not be a second street sweeper, it would just be replacement of the one we have now.
And tell us too on that, I know street sweepers are more than just making the streets look pretty, but tell us more about the function of the street sweeper too.
Well, really the main function, you know, and you're right, it is partly making the streets look pretty, but it's a stormwater machine. You know, it's what we use to clean out all the inlets, all the areas where we have problems with, with pipes that clog. And while we can do some of that with, with some of our utility machines, whether it be an auger or a vacuum machine. The street sweeper is our primary stormwater inlet cleaner. And so yes, that's where it does function the most.
I might also.
I might also add that when you see that street sweeper going up and down, the curbs and gutters, what it does is take that leaves and humus and buildup dirt off of there. And that increases the life of gutters. If you go look at gutters, there's a lot of reason why they fail. And one of them is they aren't getting cleaned and you're not getting that debris off those gutters.
And in the criteria for the sediment control was included? And that's why you would be able to use the sediment control would be the reason why you could use these dollars for the purchase of a street sweeper?
So is it a, I'm being redundant here, but is it a second street sweeper though? Because we're, we're not getting rid of the initial one, are we?
Yes, we would be.
Okay.
Yeah, we would trade it.
Okay.
We missed both last.
Okay, that's, that's where I was confused. I thought we were keeping both and I can understand if the, because of the fault of the original one, we had those issues again at that point, we could get rid of it because we have a backup. But if we're just replacing, then that makes more sense.
Yeah, we would not have a second one. Yeah, you're probably, you're really right. We do not have a need for a second street sweeper, we need one that works every day.
Because how long were we with that one?
Over a year.
Yeah.
Over a year.
Anything we can do with that old one, sell it or just?
Yeah, it would trade, it would trade. You know, there have been some things done to, to help put it up in better condition. Quite honestly, the reason this is on here, we're not convinced. You know, we've been, we've been working every day at this point in time, but we don't know when the next fire happens. You know, so.
The current street sweeper would be new to somebody else, whether that be somebody in a region or a third world country. It would be new to somebody.
We would know that.
Well, and I'm glad that Dennis kind of gave us an idea or, or a, you know, an overview of why we were purchasing the street sweeper. And one of the questions I was going to ask, if you guys could kind of give us a close notes version of the three remaining big-ticket items. That way, because we're, we're aware of why, but I don't think maybe the public would be aware of, I mean, it just says scum, I mean, what are we doing this? But I don't think maybe the public would be aware of, I mean, it just says scum run. I mean, what are we doing this scum run, and why? Why is it necessary?
Paul, could you go back to slide six, please? Thank you. Thank you.
Let me address scup run, and Dennis could jump in here. We actually are kind of taking that back and go-go get some other research, but we think what the former Public Works Director put that on there for was to go in and do repairs along scup run. But we want to go back and talk to our city engineer and see if they've done any, any work on that. And we want to go make sure that what we're seeing in scup run is what we're seeing. Now, there are failure points. I mean, there are, there are points you go along. And, and the, 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 the the channel, there are some repairs that need to be in the channel, and part of the discussion is, is there a way that we can go back with a natural element to do that? There are also sides to scup run that need to be repaired also, but, but at this point, we would prefer, we leave that on there, but we need to do some more research before we recommend that. Is that fair?
I would also add that once you get that report back, that there are, in our secondary list, another one or two stormwater projects that could replace this if this becomes not necessarily the priority at this time, that would also help lessen that financial burden on the stormwater utility itself. And we've done that with all, all of the utilities here.
And this was originally in the stormwater fund. There's, there's funds allocated in there for maintenance and but we just need to go back and look at that. So that leaves the pump station backup power and the UV disinfection system. And I'll let Mr. Tharp run through those.
Yeah, UV disinfection is the final stage of, at our wastewater plant, which is, which is our new wastewater plant that's picking years old. You know, and it is just time. We've done the legwork on the UV disinfection system already. We've looked at replacement options. And we've had three, maybe four bids at this point in time. Pretty much our decision is that we will be repairing and replacing the necessary equipment of the same brand that is in there. It's kind of where we're at. It's an expensive proposition, but in order to stay compliant, it's one that we got to spend money on. The UV bar screen is, is kind of the same thing. It's another one that we will have to look at as we move forward. The backup power is to the water, water plant pump station. We do have situations, albeit not many of them, and I wear too many hats here, but when the electricity goes out, we could find ourselves in a place where we could not pump water out of the river up to the water plant in order to treat water. And so, having that kind of backup would alleviate for the most part, that situation. I never, nothing's 100%, but it would, it would be the safety valve for us at that point in time.
And do we currently have a UV disinfection system there now?
We do. Yes, we do.
Okay. Because I remember I took a tour of that. I think I was told, if I remember right, that the water we discharge is cleaner than the water we take in.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Although I have not been the one that was going to test that theory and drink it. They say, they say that, yes, it's cleaner than the water coming in.
There is a reason why somebody else treats that downstream.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but I, I think the important thing to note there is we have never been out of compliance with the water that goes back into the river. And that's our goal. Other questions? That covered pretty much?
Thank you.
I have a question regarding that, but on one of the slides about the sub recipient grant. Is that something we can tie into, like, the requests that we've had to help the homeless population with, you know, the overnight saving hotels and things? Is Hope Health able to apply for that sub recipient grant through us?
Yes, so any agency that, that is already basically set up with a program like that could apply for our funding. The, the difficulty will come when it might be difficult to be able to support the need because so much money has been filtered to those agencies directly through that 2.3 billion that came to State of Kansas, directly to those agencies anyway. And so, I, that is one of what I understand. Some of the other agencies are having difficulty with, they want to help fund these, all of these, but they are having a tough time making the numbers work when there's a request for those dollars because so much has been bundled through them. Now, I'm not saying that wouldn't be, that that would be the case here, but absolutely, we'd want to set the program up, and then we'd want to see really truly what the need is for those agencies, and then we'd have to have some criteria for analyzing that before we would. And it wouldn't be just a, hey, we think we'd like to give $5,000 here, or $50,000, or whatever that number might be. They'd have to approve the financial relief for that.
When we talked, when we talked about backup, I'm sorry, but when we talked about backup power, I would also say that this is not going to be something that just sets at the pump station. You know, this will be rolling backup power. It could be good for a number of uses, and we do not have any access of, of rolling generators to use as backup power, so.
Yeah, like some of these other allowable projects. One, the question I've got is the roadside park camping site. Was that going to be at the roadside park south of town by the bike trail, or where was that?
It would be right next to the bike trail. It would be something easy for them to just simply get off of the trail, stay the night, and then continue on their way.
I drove through that park, it's not on the level ground, right in the park itself. It may be on the, where if there was some level ground, I don't know. $3,000 sound like a pretty reasonable cost for.
I think it included some groundwork and railroad ties to separate the sites, and it was very minimal improvements.
Was there a consideration, I know I had a citizen that contacted me sometime, somewhere, a few days back, probably a few months back, regarding the possible addition of camping sites for bicyclists. Was that something that we could consider too, on the trail?
That is what that is.
I believe that is.
That is exactly what that is. And what they're, what they were really talking is out at the roadside park, out south of town. You're right, the ground is not level out there, but they were talking about doing basically some parasing type of things for tent campers. You know, to be able just to pull in there, throw their tents up, kind of little separate sites all, all through there.
So that's on one trail, but we have another trail.
Yeah, there was nothing designed for the point of Australia.
Yeah, actually, I have a couple lots that that could be done on, on this trail.
We'll check into that.
I do have a few questions. Do we have, I had a citizen that contacted me that suggested that the city pay off the electric bill from winter storm Yuri, and, and we were buying sweets, or street sweeper. Tell me about.
I'm glad you're asking that. So this comes back to a lot of those criteria that are set and surround the use of these funds. There is a beginning date for the expenses incurred that you can reimburse or use these toward, toward. And that was at the beginning of March in 2021. So for that particular, say, invoice in which we have the current surcharge, that winter storm actually happened in February. But regardless, the intent of the ARPA funds were not for the electric utility. And that's why you don't see any of those electric projects on our recommended list. And they've been very specific about it not being intended for use for electric infrastructure, only for the water sewer and stormwater infrastructure, and broadband was large on the list. So in that case, I don't know that there would be a way that we would be able to even get that done. That was over $1 million. This is 1.8 million. If we were to even consider some sort of revenue recovery, it would take away the ability to impact all of these other projects that we could get done that might be able to weigh in on some of the need for funds, either through, you know, future planned projects and/or some of the utilities and needs related cases for those other projects as well. So I, the, the short answer is no, we're not able to use it directly for an electric-type invoice for a variety of reasons.
So that's not criteria that we created, and we have no control over that criteria, and we have to follow that criteria. Then my next question would be under funding options. I know that there has been some community conversation, and I know that we have started having conversations here at the City Commission regarding the future of aquatics in the city of Ottawa. Is it possible that there could be something in the funding projects that will be other, you know, partially funded, or, or kind of a jumpstart of how aquatics can look in the future with the city of Ottawa?
So also a very good question. The way that we interpret the criteria for this is that if we were to go back to the four purposes, it was intended for combating the COVID-19 or its negative economic impacts, and the way that we see all of those parks-type or recreational-type improvements are improvements to existing areas, not necessarily the creation of new. And so that's what you'll see a lot of in here. It was resurfacing of a port that got used significantly during that time. There was, like, the bottle fillers, that is, reducing the need for, you know, it's a hands-free water option. All of those things that we've been able to tie back to the use of, or improvements to something that was used extensively during the COVID-19 time, or improvements to those same, those same things. So I don't know, we could reach out to some people to find out if that would be useful. I don't know, we would probably want to identify exactly what portion of that project we would be able to use that for. I don't believe it was intended for design of, or those types of expenses. But we could, we could certainly reach out and ask the question. I don't have a lot of high hope that it might be eligible under this, but again, remember, anything that we're putting these dollars towards, that we might have otherwise budgeted money for, then frees up those original dollars to be used for any other initiatives that we might see useful for the community.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Someone's, I do like, I like to have basketball court and water line to the copper team park, and yeah, I think those are some great uses of funds.
I would just tell you that there are some projects on here, we're kind of having a discussion that we can get taken care of other ways, and that gives a larger pool of money to do some other things. So that's why I said this is a living discussion that you're probably going to see on your agenda. Maybe as much as Storm Yuri.
Well, I noticed that Cedar and Oak Stormwater is 925,000, even if we could, that's on our CIP, I believe, for this year. It'd be nice to be able to put it, yeah, 2022, be nice, we put it, fortunate as money toward that.
And I might, I might also make a couple comments there. So also, within all of these guidelines, and there's hundreds of pages, so it's not why, these are just, just spelled out very clearly and easily, but there are also purchasing and project management criteria that are set out. So beyond the list of what we want to do, there is also a variety of policies and procedures we're going to have to follow. So things like committing money to a part of a project is going to be very difficult. But in that same case, if we were to do, use the dollars for another project that frees up then money to do a complete project, then we would be fine. So for instance, the other project that's on there, I believe, is 400, 525. So if we were to be able to do something like that, where it's an entire project, then that is something that we otherwise wouldn't need those funds for in the utility. Or, you know, there's a variety of ways that we could do this, but we want to be very strategic about the, the way that we can make sure we meet the requirements under the, the grant.
And what, what, how far out, how long do we have to spend the money?
We need to have it either spent or committed by December 31 of 2024. And if it's committed, meaning under contract, then it needs to be fully spent by December 31 of 2026.
So as I said, we need to kind of dip our toes into this and get, get the purchasing part of it figured out, the policies that we need. And if you're comfortable, we would bring you back two or three projects next week that we think we can use those to get a lot of this upfront work figured out. Or melody can get figured out.
Well, yeah, I think that's a great idea, you know, bring a few ideas to us next week. And we'll hold this over for another discussion. I'm sure, like you said, we'll have a few of these, just kind of working our way through, you know, what, what items we think is, is important how we should proceed. Commissioners, you okay? We're moving this on to next week's study session again. Thank you.
Thank you.
That moves us on to comments by our city manager.
Well, thank you for allowing me an hour.
Do you want us to be here?
I would hope you would be. The, the first thing I want to, this is the base grant that Paul referred to, 137 pages. I sent this to you. One of you said that you had memorized this during the day, so we'll probably be giving a test later, but, but for the public, for the citizens, here's what this grant is. We, we applied for funding for an elevated storage, water storage tank proximity park, along with a water pump station at Proximity Park. You may ask, why do we need that now? Well, we don't, but we do. And what this does, if we're funded, we're able to get ahead of the game of when we attract an industry that says they need better fire protection, they need more water, they need better water pressure. And what that water tower does is it's not just for Proximity Park. It will serve an area out there beyond Proximity Park. So our match would be 25% for that project, because it says Proximity Park. We would take those matching funds out of our sales tax fund. The next one I want to talk to is the high-capacity lift station, which is on K-68. We're, we've started up discussions again with a couple companies that are interested in locating on K-68. Some of you might remember that there was a truck stop, stop, excuse me, scheduled to go out there. In fact, when I came here 15 years ago, they had set up the TIP district when those discussions were announced, and that didn't take place. Well, we have new investors, we have people who bought not only that land, but other land out there for commercial, retail, maybe a truck stop, maybe housing. So at some point, you need the lift station, and Dennis can explain to you why it is better to get this ahead of the curve than behind the curve. And it really contributes to your continued economic development out in that part of town. Is that fair?
Yeah.
So.
Do you know where that would be located, Dennis, or is this?
Yeah, it's, would be located actually very, you know, where the existing lift station is out there.
Is it by the Neosha County?
It's located right by Neosha County, it's right in that area. And, and a lot of that work has been done, is what I would say. The work hasn't been done. The acquiring of easements and the acquisition of any land or anything like that, a lot of that legwork has been done in order to move this project forward.
And there has been some design.
Yes.
That, and all of these, there has been some design. So that, that matching fund would come out of sewer funds. That's where that matching portion would come from. That could either be through financing or through cash on hand, or That, that could either be through financing or through cash on hand or a combination of both. The last one says natural gas line proximity park. Paul has worked on this ever since he's been here. Imagine if we get a prospect to the door, we can get, we have control of all the utilities with the exception of the gas line utility. So imagine you're at the door, they're at the door, you're talking to the prospect and can we have gas? And they get told, yes, you can, but it's going to cost you $2 million. So with this base grant between Paul and myself and Speaker Pro-Tam Finch, we've had discussions with Kansas Gas Service and they are included in this grant application. And I will tell you that the state's very well aware of how gas is needed at Proximity Park in order to make this work. So the plan is that if we got funded with that, we would contract with the gas company and they will also pick up the 25% of that. So that's, that's what all these 137 pages are. You might recall that we also put together a grant for Sparks Funds for the Water Tower, Water Pump and High Capacity Northern Port. That's 100%, we'll see where they're at. I got an email today that really said they don't know where they're at with that, but that we could go watch our next meeting online and maybe find that out. If we're funded with this, it is a deal changer, I think, for the future. It just gives Paul, gives the city, gives the county additional perils in that quiver that we could use.
The water tower.
Additional tools in our toolbox that we could use.
And the water tower, do they have a location selected for that?
Pardon me?
The water tower, is there a selection of a site on that?
The water tower, as you may remember, we purchased two other parcels of property on the east side of Montana. We have two houses on those properties, we demolish those houses. The water tower is designed to sit right there, kind of at the Interstate 35 bridge, they're on the east side of the road.
That's great, and I can see us painting something about Proximity Park on the water tower, some way to advertise whatever we got.
Do you mean you're going to paint it?
We heard you, we heard you were an artist.
Yeah. He can volunteer.
We could name that the Skidmore.
Well, that's, we're saying that for the.
I mean, if he paints it, he can paint whatever he wants on it.
Who's going to stop you?
Yeah, but Tim will let me know when they have to go retrieve somebody off the, so you can do it anonymously.
We'll be waiting till the new fire truck arrives.
All right. So the next thing I want to talk to you, I've had a couple of emails from you about the new mask requirements. I'm not an expert on the mask requirements, but I will, I'll, I will tell you what I know and then we can go from there. What I will tell you is they did not drop mask requirements. What they did do was actually probably bringing it in line with what the practice is out there now. And they call it relaxing, and they relaxed their indoor masking requirements. If, if you read through that, that they still say, hey, if you're going to be in a crowd over 500, you better protect yourself. It's like if you're going up to the golf show this weekend, okay? What they said was they're, we're going to rate counties, we're going to use our metrics, we're going to rate counties, we're going to rate them low, moderate, substantial, high based upon the COVID number 19, COVID case numbers and positivity rates. So if you follow Franklin County, they put that out once a week and you see that it's peaked and it's come down. Now Franklin County right now is listed in the median, so what's the median mean? So with the medium level, the criteria is if you're at high risk or severe illness, if you have an immune disorder, if, if, if you have anything that makes you at risk, then you should talk to your healthcare provider about whether you need to wear a mask and take other precautions. And these are recommendations, I want you to understand, CDC doesn't order anybody to do anything, all right? It's kind of like what we do at City Hall, it's a recommendation, nobody's been ordered to do anything. We, we have actually just said, please do this. Stay up to date with COVID-19 vaccines and get tested if you have symptoms, which is what we've heard before. So what, what they said was if you're comfortable, if you're comfortable not wearing a mask, then we really have no problem with that, correct? But here's a key part of what they said. Obviously, if people want to wear a mask because they're immune compromised, because they have concerns about their safety and safety in the communities, they should have the ability to do that, but this is certainly a step forward. So, um, and I would tell you, we'll probably step back, take another look at this and how we advise our people. For example, there's a lot of people in this room that are comfortable with not wearing a mask and they've been that way for quite a while. And there are others that were, for, for reasons of safety, personal safety, are comfortable in wearing that mask, okay? We don't know who might be sick in here, we don't know who might have symptoms for the flu or anything else. I've reached out to Brenda Fitzmaire, as has the Human Resource Director, and asked how, how they're viewing this countywide and what they're, what they are going to advise the press to do. So that's where we're at with that. That's, and you can go online and read all this. I would advise you though, go to the CDC site, read the real deal, don't go reading those synopses out there on social media, but don't tell you the full story. All right. So I did want to back up to another project we're working on, and that is the solar, the solar panel out there. Because I think there's some confusion about this where we're at. And what you approved was a memorandum of understanding where we go out and do geotechnical work on that site. And as I've explained to a couple of you, Dennis and Kami A. and others looked at a myriad of sites around the community and to see what would be best. And I think it was felt that that was the best site out there. I'd much rather own it, I'd much rather have it on our land, but we just weren't in a position to do that. There is one area, but I'm not sure you want to give up that many acreage when you've spent that much money on this development area. And I would tell you, that isn't your first bite of the apple, so to speak, because if that comes back, that that, that the geotechnical says you can do that, you still have to negotiate an agreement with Evergy, all right? You still have to negotiate an agreement with Evergy that you're going to do this and you don't have to approve it when it comes up for approval. The other thing we don't know is what GRDA is going to come back. There's a possibility they could come back with their cost being lower than what the contract is you're looking at, but I wouldn't, as long as it took them the middle cities for Storm Erie, I don't know when they're going to come back with that. So I, I just wanted to tell you where we're going. The next step will be to report back to you when we get the results of that geotechnical. I don't think they're going to do that, it'll be a month before they actually do that. So, and then we'll, we'll go from there. So what I want to assure you is that you will have other opportunities to discuss if you want to consummate that arrangement, that agreement. That's all I have.
Thank you. Comments by city commissioners, Commissioner Kaywood?
You know, this was a big weekend for state wrestlers from OHS. Several state wrestlers got sent or were sent or earned the right to go to state wrestling, which is a huge individual sport, but something certainly to be proud of if you qualified to be a state wrestler. Parker Gooch becomes the fourth person from Ottawa to be the 4A state champion wrestler for, I think, 145, I'm not really sure about the number or about the weight class, but congratulations to Parker, that's a huge individual accomplishment, but certainly the city of Ottawa is proud of you. Also want to say good luck to the OHS Cyclone basketball team who will play at Altamont tomorrow at 6:00 PM and good luck to those ladies. That's a long drive to Altamont, but hopefully they bring home a victory. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Graves?
I have no report today.
Thank you. Mayor Pro-Tam Skidmore?
All right, I just have one, I, I want to say congratulations to my fifth and sixth grade girls' basketball team that I coached to a championship over the league in, all because of them. I, I really want to say thank you to a couple of different people that were involved. Start with Kelly Whitaker for letting them actually play on the high school basketball court, it was a big deal for them. When I first told them about it, you should have seen them jumping off the walls at the Gobert Center, so a really big deal for them. Derek Chapel was actually there, he actually did the, the lineup, they ran out, slapped hands and, and all that good stuff. It was really a big deal for them. And then certainly ORC, the ORC for thinking outside the box. You know, they did it back in, in soccer, they let them play on the soccer field and don't get me wrong, they, I don't think they were prepared for how big of a field it was. So a lot of them were worn out by the end of the game, but that was good for the parents. But certainly for the basketball game, it was awesome. They, the high school basketball team was there also, so they all got to take pictures. Kinsley actually, I think, photobombed us a little bit, so, you know, we, we expected that to occur, but really, really big deal for them. It made some memories for them that, that will certainly last for, for quite some time and unfortunately might be the only time that those girls' names are called, headed out and onto that basketball court. So it was, it was a really big deal for them. So thank you, ORC and everybody else that was involved. That being said, I'm going to move this body recess into executive session for a period of 20 minutes for the purpose of consulting with the city attorney, certain matters protected by the attorney-client privilege, with Chief Adam Wine Gardner, Stacy Allen, Richard Naiset and Darby Van Houten in attendance. No binding action shall be taken in, in this executive session. I'm going to give it a couple of minutes for everybody to work their way out, but we will reconvene an open session, I believe, at, let's say, 6:05. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? All right, thank you.